I'm not sure.
So let's call the work session to order. There we are. Good evening, everyone. And let's go right to the agenda. I'm pulling up anyway. Okay. Somebody want? Ah, there it is. We all become...
Slaves to the...
Correct. Do we have a run from the table item here?
For Allison Hines.
Yeah, sorry. Do I stand by them?
Come right up and sit at the table. How about that?
Well, I printed, Orelli is going to be here in a few minutes, but I'm Allie Sebastian. I'm the regional manager for all of our new development projects with Morgan. So I printed a little booklet for you guys on what we would like to do with banners at Allison. Give them one. Yep, thank you. And I don't know, is this, should I pass these out? Anyone or? So I wasn't here for the initial application session, but I know that you guys had other questions regarding the banners. So just to walk through this, we, the reason that we want to put the banners up is just to let every, let the community know that we have begun leasing, draw them near our website. We found that a majority of people are showing up to the property for tours or just to inquire, and they end up going in the construction entrance, which has been really difficult because they end up having to pull around and then circle back on Penfield Road, and they don't know where they're going. So it would help us immensely if we could also, page two of this shows two other signs that we want to post with just arrows directing people away from those entrances so they don't actually enter until the property is fully open. So that's page three is what those would look like. We actually, I just had a meeting with all of our property managers who oversee our new development projects, and all of them, even though they used Google Maps or Apple Maps, they ended up going in the Penfield Road entrance and getting lost. So it's been detrimental to our leasing. We did a similar banner in the city of Canadagua at Pinnacle North, and as soon as the banners went up, we saw a 300% increase in traffic. Start, you know, from the month after. It was incredible. So we want to get these leased. We don't want them to remain vacant. Orelli manages the building. She's doing the lease up, and we'd like to expedite it as much as possible.
Do we have, do we have a copy of, well, actually, probably in a minute. So I want to make sure that we revisit the stated reasons for the table and motion.
We have it here for us. Alternative as far as size and location of proposed signage. Supporting evidence as to why signage as proposed is necessary. Excellent marketing strategies, procedures, length of time we've been marketing the property.
Right.
Yep.
Their immediate marketing goals, not how far behind. Supporting evidence that the granting of the special permit will significantly improve odds of success and meeting marketing goals, et cetera.
Awesome. Good.
So we started marketing January 1st. We pay, I think we spend about $3,500 a month in online advertising. We host open house events. We have been engaging the community, reaching out to some of our preferred employers. Let's see. We do have A-frames just at the entrance of the property. We do Facebook. We have social media outreach. So we definitely are utilizing all of the internet and market outreach that we traditionally do for new builds. So we're doing a March tour, travel and apply. So if you tour, you can be raffled in to win a $500 Southwest Airlines gift card. We're doing that amongst the new development. As I mentioned, the reason that I think these are necessary is because we've seen success with them in the past, and right now people aren't sure if we're still under construction. Penfield Road gets a lot more traffic than old Penfield Road. And like I said, it's just hard to find the entrance. Apple Maps does not currently recognize old Sable Oaks as the entrance, old Shady Run Lane off of Sable Oaks. So we've, we keep putting in tickets for Apple Maps to update that. Google Maps does, and we've also updated our website to include a little bit more direction to people that, you know, it's right at the intersection of Sable Oaks and old Penfield. So the positioning of the banners, I mean, this is the only building where you can really, you get a good view from Penfield Road, and it's not distracting as you go by. It's just there. I don't know where, what other building we would be able to put the banners on. The response for the banking issue, or the bank, I mean, we don't have a certificate of occupancy, so our occupancy numbers wouldn't have anything, we don't have anyone living there yet, so we're not expecting to meet occupancy goals with the bank yet. But in order for us to meet those occupancy numbers, it would be helpful to draw more attention to the property. And then what were the other, what were some of the other ones?
Why do you need, why don't you explain to me why you need two four-story tall signs on a building that sticks out probably 90 feet in the air to begin with?
Would you like us to reduce the size of them?
We actually spoke about that last meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
The variance request, or, this is a special permit, but the size of the signs being requested is extremely large.
20, would 20 feet by four feet be sufficient?
Well...
It depends what they look like, where you want to put them.
This is what the banners look like. This is where we want them. So if you were to reduce them in size by twen, in half, it would shrink them.
I think you had 10 times what's allowed by code.
With, with 40?
Well, four feet is, I mean, that would, you wouldn't even be able to read the font of Now Leasing or the website. It's a lot of words to fit in.
Andy, is there a, given that this is a special permit, do the, is there a dimensional size? I want to make sure I understand, you know, the variance versus a special. We kind of, we're changing the way that we do things in terms of signage, and I'm late.
Well, my understanding is the special permit is for signage that doesn't conform to code for whatever reason. And the code allows for one real estate sign, which we consider this to be a real estate sign.
Sure. How about particular dimension?
Thirty, well, 32 square feet is the maximum area of the sign, or area of the sign.
Okay.
And this would be 160.
So eight by four?
Right.
Okay.
Can I ask, are these all, are these alternative designs? Because these weren't in the original application at all.
Yeah, I was just going to mention.
I know we didn't ask for alternatives, so I'm wondering if that's what that is.
Well, these are actually for the entrance, which is marked on the second page.
But that wasn't, that wasn't in the original application, right?
No, I don't believe it is. I mean, I would like to, we've just been finding this week that people have been getting lost. So they've been calling angry that they can't find the properties.
I get, here's the problem that we have with that. We receive an application, any application, we're required to provide public notice about the specifics of the application.
Okay.
And hold a hearing on the application that has been made.
Okay.
To come in after the fact, I understand why you'd do it. But to come in and modify their application would frankly require an entire new
Okay, well then...
public hearing. Now, by the way, what I suggest that you do is have a conversation with staff about potential safety issues and what flexibility, and I want to speak with you before you, Andy, but what flexibility there may be to put up those signs for safety concerns. I don't, I don't know, but I know even some of the neighbors that were here last month talked about traffic and cars turning around because they were getting confused about which entrance to use and not use. So while I will tell you, we cannot consider those signs today because they weren't part of the public hearing. I encourage you to talk with staff about that. You may, you can feel free to come back. You have a right to do that.
Well, so if last hearing you were talking about alternative signs, if you wanted alter, on the building, okay. So what do you, just for clarification, what do you mean, safety concerns in terms of installing the banners on the building?
No, safety concerns of people driving in and out the proper entrance.
Okay.
So, but I, but I hear what you're saying.
Now, I might add a little clarification. I mean, we did talk about alternatives, and it did come up last meeting that part of the reason for the signs on the building was to send people to the leasing office. And I think one of the things we said is those signs in the building don't send you to the lease office. These ones on the ground would. You know, so these could be alternatives to the signs on the building, but I wouldn't look at both.
Right. And Now Leasing implies that you're leasing.
You're leasing, if that's the leasing entrance.
Well, yeah, those, at this point, honestly, the bill, if you don't want the building signs, that's fine. All I, in the immediate, like, right this second, it would be great to have the directionals just at least telling people, "Don't pull in this entrance. Please go down Penfield Road." Even if we can put them up temporarily, do a temporary permit and then re, and then do the hearing. Because this is kind of a really time-sensitive issue.
So those are 12 by four?
Well, we would have, we would have another
Issue.
issue with these new signs because they're proposed to be in the right of way, which isn't...
Well, those can be set back further, though. I mean, those are just indicating the position, so they can be set, there are construction signs up right now. So I know that there are signs, there's signs along.
I'm not altogether sure those signs are out of the right of way either, though.
How far back?
Is it right of way now?
Does that go?
I can show you the...
While they're talking, how people feel about directional signs on the ground.
So people would have already...
Better. For eyesore purposes, I'd...
For people driving...
If I went one way or the other, I'd say this on the ground.
I really don't see the way that situated that building, that you need them elevated on the building.
Correct.
I like these better. Oh, go, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I mean, your eye is drawn to the, to the size of this complex anyways. And if there's signs down below it...
Yeah. At least for now. If six months, things haven't changed, you know, you can, they can always come back.
But I actually, no, no, no. I was just going to say that I don't like the bright neon yellow. Like, to me, that's just not a good look in the neighborhood.
So the white, we had, I had a proof set out, and it was white with blue writing, and I just don't think that drive, people drive right by it. Just like our fence wrap, there's fence wrap up that is nice, tasteful, and it just blends in, and people, like, I need something that tells people, like, "Don't turn in here, but please continue," like, that can see it.
So while you were conversing about the right of way, and I don't know if that led you to any conclusions, board members were talking amongst themselves, and as a general concept, the idea of ground signs for safety purposes, but also for the Now Leasing purposes, I think is something we'd be willing to talk about. But the location, it would be permitted, I don't know if that's a showstopper, Andy. I don't know if you can tell. You want to put it somewhere where it's going to be, have some sort of utility. He's concerned about being put in the, in the middle of a right of way.
Well, they'd have to get a permit from the state, state DOT.
Well, if no, I mean, people are not supposed to be turning in there only, because it's not a full entrance to a property right now. So there really isn't a right of way. It's the construction, it's only a construction entrance.
There's a highway road right over there.
No, but yeah, it's a highway, it's a, there's an established right of way there for the Air State Department of Transportation, so far off the middle of the road. So even if we were to approve it, it would be subject to you obtaining a permit.
Unless it's behind that line.
And that may suffice for your purposes. I just don't know.
It would just need to be set further up. It would just need to be raised a little bit more so that people, I don't know. We'd have to, I'd have to go take a look.
What we've done in the past with stuff like this with location is if you could put something up that's approximately the same size, even a board, you know, a piece of plywood or something, where you want it and the size, that's extremely helpful for us to get a feel for, you know, whether we think it's going to be sufficient for your purposes and how it looks in relation to the general area. That's something to think about.
Well, the posts, so it's just an, I mean, it's a large expense. So it's $1,500 to get the posts in. It's $3,000 for banners. So $5,000 for just a considerate, just to give an idea of what it's going to look like. It's just a lot. But we can certainly look into something.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that you create the sign itself. More that you'd show us the size that it's going to be and where it's going to sit. I mean, you'd have to put it in a, which you could stick to, I don't know.
Couple pieces of plywood, held up by two by fours, yeah. Just to see where it looks, or just how it looks.
Okay, and if we were to do that, what, who would be reviewing that? Would this have to wait another month for the next meeting? Is there someone that can stop by and take a look at it?
Well, the answer to both is yes. The purpose of putting it up is so that we'd be able to get a chance to get out there and take a look at it and see what it would look like. We only meet once a month, and obviously that would allow staff as well to go and see, you know, where it would be and do an assessment of whether there's, there are any safety issues that the placement of the sign creates, site distance and that sort of thing.
Did we address the issue of a different set of signs? Have we ever designed them?
Well, no, it's, you know, Andres mentions that we did ask for alternatives, but they're in kind of different, different locations. They're clearly alternatives, especially if...
Well, I think with the concerns we raised last time about them being so visible enough in the air and what the residents, you know, spoke out about dropping them down the ground would be an alternative to some of those concerns.
And actually, I think you did bring up some of the, or some neighbors, about the need to have people go in those entrances. So it was a draft. It just wasn't, it wasn't put in the public notice specifically. So, all right, well...
Just, I mean, a side note, we're opening for, I mean, our certificate of occupancy, we're expecting to get on April 1st. So, yeah, this, the sooner that we can come to some kind of conclusion would be very helpful.
Andy, what kind of signage can they put up without a permit? Isn't there some kind of signage they can put up?
Eight by four?
Well, without a permit, six square feet, which it really isn't going to serve much.
And then we still need a permit for directional signage from this board?
Yeah, well, they can get a permit, and if it's above, if it's larger than six square feet, they need to get a signed permit for up to 32 square feet, one sign. They can get temporary permits for things like wind feather flags and banners, but that's going to be for a limited period of time.
What is the difference between the DGA sign that is up already, the construction site signs, and...
I don't know that they obtained a permit for that. That may be a design as well. I'd have to check on that.
And they didn't appear before this board. So when Andy's mentioning permits, he's talking, and his recent statements are permits from town staff, not permits from this board. So Pete asked, what can they do now? And if I'm hearing you correctly, Andy, they can, on the building, put an eight by four real estate sign without this board's permission?
I think they can.
Okay. And, and, so that's one thing that you can sort of do in the interim, or you should confirm.
Check with staff and...
Especially the duration as well. Not just the size and the location, but the duration. You should check that. If you can get a piece of plywood cheap and just put it up there, even for just a couple of days, let us know when it's there. We can all drive by and, and look at what, but I think more important on that, honestly, is the DOT and the right of way issue. Because we may be thrilled with it and say, "Oh, good. It's going to be safer, et cetera." But DOT may say, "We're not going to let you," and then, you know, your time is wasted here. And, but it would be, so you may, you may consider a cheaper temporary banner, but again, confirm that with, with staff.
So would the temporary plywood that we would like to put, that we put up, does that have to be eight by four, or is that, is 12 by four acceptable?
Well, what we were saying with the plywood is if you want to demonstrate where the sign would be, what it would look like, we've had, you know, other companies do mockups, and then we drive by and say, "That's really not obtrusive at all."
Yeah, but I'm going to have, I mean, they're builders. I can just, you can have them make up with actual, the exact same size. So can we do the 12 by four, or is it, does it have to be eight by four?
I think a lot of it depends on what direction you want to pursue. If you want to pursue a 12 by four sign, then that's what you'd want to put up there.
Yeah.
And that's what you have here, I think, 12 by four.
Yes. Okay, so that would be okay with you.
So the closer you can get it to actual intended size and location, the better. Maybe just maybe spray paint the red X on it or something. I don't know.
Most of the time, it's, and I'm not, there's no guarantees, but most of the time it works to the applicant's advantage. Because a lot of times, it's not as big as you conceive it to be on a site, once it gets on the site, so, right?
It was that case with Midtown. Oh, for sure. We all thought that was a huge thing. Didn't look as bad.
Right.
Yeah. So, and let me say this, too. Honestly, we, I think, it may not seem like it to you two, but you're in front of a board that tries to help businesses. We want to be able to help. We understand. And we'll be as flexible as we can within reason. One of the things that we wanted to ask you in the interim, and if you don't have it tonight, if you can provide it, would be great, is in terms of rentals, where you are compared to where your projections were.
So we are currently, I mean, I can tell you that right now. We're 2% leased. Our projections don't, our projections are based on the occupancy. So at this point in April, when we open in April, I guess I can get back to on what the projected occupancy was. But we don't have a COVO right now, so it doesn't necessarily, it's...
But you understand why we're asking that, because that helps, depending on what the answer is. That may support your application, demonstrating the need for these signs as opposed to just a desire to have the signs. I, I'm actually familiar with the one that was in Canadagua. It's a little bit different. That's, that's one building among, among many in that area. But I, but I get, this is Mike pointing out, this building stands on its own to a certain degree. But if, as I said, you find that you need some help to try to get things going there, nobody wants a vacant building there. No way.
No, and I'm...
Including this board, and then probably the neighbors.
Yes.
So, so we are willing, and you know, feel free to pass, we're willing to help, but we need to do it within reason and, you know, properly as well.
You could make an argument that maybe you don't even have a problem at this point. Well, you don't, because you...
Well, no, I mean, we do, because all of my, I mean, I manage 13 different new developments, and all of them are seeing a great deal of traffic right now pick up because it's March, and leasing season is pretty much March through August. And this property in particular is not getting as many calls and emails as it should be. So calls, walk-ins, all that.
So do you think that's because, do you think that's because, solely because of being difficult to find and see, or, I mean, is it price right?
It's not solely. We obviously would take a look at pricing, but I think pricing would be the last thing we would look at since people can't even get to the, like, they don't know where to go right now. So I think that is the first hurdle I'd want to overcome before taking a look at our pricing.
But without a COVO, you can't commit to a specific time for occupancy.
No, yes, we, we do pre-lease apartments, and we are on time to open on April 1st.
But I'm just saying, that might affect it, too. Word could get out that, you know...
No, we pre-lease buildings. I'm 65% pre-leased for a building that's opening April 1st downtown. So we do this all the time.
And it's the same marketing efforts?
We use the same marketing. We have banners up. They have fence wraps. They have banners on their building. That's 933 U. We actually just received our COVO for that, so the banners and the fencing just came down. But another example, let me see, there. We will be doing some at the Alliance Building downtown, 183 East Main Street. So this isn't an uncommon thing that we've done to get pre-leased, so...
So just to kind of sum up here, because we're running into our...
Yep, sorry.
So I, no, no, don't apologize. It's, so I'm sure this will be tabled again. But you've stated tonight that you're willing to modify our application to reduce the size of the building signs requested. You know, we hear that. Cut them in half, I think you said. And then your, your plan is to place a plywood facsimile, if you will, of the directional signs, the approximate location and size that you intend to put there. Consult with staff about that. Let us know. And then, again, consult with staff about what temporary measures you may have without this board's approval, and, and get in touch with DOT.
Okay.
But we're then talking to who of building mounted signs?
Perhaps, perhaps. Yeah, I mean...
I mean, if you take that away, then we have the issue with, then it's not an alternative.
Sure, sure. But two versus one. What, basically what Mike is saying is a lot of times in sign situations, we ask folks to be more flexible than their request. You have two buildings, and then tonight, two ground mounted signs. So you may sort of alluded to this yourself already. You've already agreed to reduce the size of the building. Would you get rid of the building if you were to get the two? You sort of nodded about that before.
Well, we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't put the building, we'd have, we have to get a lift to put those up. We wouldn't, I wouldn't put the building ones up at all and waste the time and energy on it if the ground ones were approved. But, because I do understand, everyone can see the building. I get it. But we do want to draw people to the website because the website does also tell you how to get there and where the leasing office is, so...
Yeah, well, that can go on, directional signs, whatever you put on, it's up to you. Leasing office is a good idea, but...
I think you've got room on there.
Yeah, we can put the website on there, too, so...
Okay. Who was leading on this?
I was. I moved the table.
Moved the table for those reasons? All those in favor? Aye.
And if you're going to get them up, let us know when.
For sure.
If you, especially if it's going to be like a two or a three or a four day period, because you obviously want to get them to see you before they can take them out.
Okay.
So, Orelli, you'll want to go through the board, and they'll let us know?
Oh, okay.
I know I'll see you next week, so, okay.
All right, we're running right up at 7 o'clock, so we'll, that was the only table matter? Thank you very much. Well, is that an action item, or is it just staying on the agenda?
Well, we can do that at the end.
Yeah, you can do that at the end. Did you want to talk, I don't know, McDonald's kind of...
Yeah, I don't know if I could bring that up at the last work session, the ending work session. McDonald's wants to reapply.
Andy, you want to speak to that?
I don't want to speak to that.
Come on up.
Thanks. I actually just noticed. I'm not on the list, and I had talked to Jim Castella earlier. And I was like, "Well, hopefully they didn't forget you." That's okay.
Hi, I'm Bessie Brug. Brug, B-R-U-G-G. And I'm with Woods Ovias, building. So, yes, McDonald's and T-Wyland have reached out to us to assist in resolution of this matter. They're doing a... They're doing a facade change and remodeling, and they do need to upgrade the signage. They were denied last month, I haven't seen, I don't think the decision's been written yet. Um, we have submitted a request, uh, for, I guess, a determination that what we're proposing is different, so that we may reapply and give back in front of the board for, um, approval of some signage. Uh, the letter that came in, I don't know if we received a copy, but we did submit a letter, um, we did submit, uh, the elevations. We have removed the McDonald's, uh, I guess it's called a word mark sign, um, from the front of the building, that substantially reduces the square footage. We're allowed 274 square feet, we could have one ginormous sign, I believe they applied for 74.9 square feet in the original application, and we're reducing that by 44% by removing the McDonald's sign. So it's a significant reduction in, um, square footage and amount of signage, um, and we're hoping that the board will allow us to...
Reapply.
...reapply. Um, I will be submitting that tomorrow morning, it's actually ready to go if the board will allow us to come in.
So that's the, well, this is the only piece of sign that's right here, plus your leader, plus your monument sign?
No.
The monument sign is not part of the application, because it's a...
It's staying.
It's a pre-existing sign, so it's technically not part of the application, wasn't part of the first application.
I think you want all three.
All three that are depicted on this drawing, Bessie, is what you'd be requesting.
Yeah, there are three golden arches.
Yep.
And, and they removed the McDonald's.
The, the letter, the letter.
The, the word, the word.
Well, in, in terms of whether we'll reconsider it, let me say this, we just had one last month that, um, we agreed to reconsider after the applicant reduced variance requests. Um, so, I'm, I, I would be fine with making a motion to allow them to reapply. Does it mean anything other than you get to reapply?
Exactly.
Um, but...
I'm okay with that, I mean, it's, it's different, and they've made some adjustments, and I'm, I'm okay making a motion as well.
Yeah, well, okay, so, we'll take that as a, my motion, Marie's second. Any further discussion on this? No further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. So that motion is granted, get it in tomorrow if you want to be on...
It will be, hopefully be here next month.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
And, and let me just say...
Sure.
That what we just went through, this board attempted to do that at the last meeting.
We attempted to say, we took the McDonald's off, you know, that you...
I don't remember the specifics, but we...
It was an all or nothing for them.
Really?
We tried to be flexible.
Oh, yeah.
So I will say, I have not seen the, the recording, I will be honest, I haven't seen the recording yet of the meeting, um...
The answer was pretty emphatic, as I recall.
Yeah.
Really? Okay. Or I wasn't there, I guess I won't comment, but I appreciate that, we, um, okay?
You've been here before, you know where we want to be.
I, yes, so...
We also agreed to rehear the one you were talking about.
Right.
Or to redo it, and they, they were emphatic on that one, too.
Yeah, well, that's, that is true.
You are reasonable people, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to come back next month. Thank you so much. Yeah, have a great day.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are a little bit over, um, which is okay, it's better than starting early. So we will, um, go, if everybody's okay, we'll walk right up there, move right into the...
Number three's not here tonight.
Oh.
With the arching...
Number three was drawn. That was drawn, yeah.
True, yeah. Just in case it's, it's still, it's still written here, I just wanted to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting's gonna take place in two parts. The first part will be our public hearings, uh, where we will ask the applicant to come up to that podium there, give us a name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done with the application presentation, the board members will have some questions, and then we'll ask anyone in the audience that cares to come up and speak about the application to do the same thing, come up to that podium, identify themselves, and then speak about the application. Uh, after the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess, and we'll reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on the applications, and then take care of any unfinished business the board may have. Members of the public are welcome at both the public hearings and the deliberations, although generally speaking, the deliberations are times reserved for conversation amongst board members, board members with staff, and sometimes our counsel. Tonight's agenda is, I'd characterize it as medium size, um, so you're free to stay, as I've said. If you don't want to, or you cannot, you can feel free to call tomorrow the zoning department and find out what action, if any, the board took on a particular item. Uh, each month, we like to point out that we think the town does a good job of notifying neighbors that live near applications, that the applications are going to be heard, and frankly, notify all citizens. Uh, town does that by posting the agendas on the website, uh, running and rerunning these meetings a few times during the month, I understand, um, sending postcards to neighbors that live within a certain distance of the application, making the applicants put the signs out in the front yard, so that people driving by can see that. That's all done so that people more fully understand their right to come in and speak about things, and that they do so, it helps us, uh, do our job, and we appreciate it. Um, I, I would note that tonight is our first full meeting with these laptop computers, so if you see board members looking down at these computers, rest assured, we are looking at documents that are pertinent to the application and, uh, and nothing else. Uh, we'll see how it works out. I brought my reading glasses, so I think I'm okay, at least in that respect. Uh, but in any event, that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks. And one application actually has been withdrawn tonight, I don't know if anybody's here on it, but it's, uh, what is it, number, number three?
Yes.
For 1270 Plank Road, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, anybody here on that one? Good.
Nope.
Okay, Andy, let's proceed.
Application number one, Steve and Sarah Paulus, 1549 Creek Street, Rochester, New York, 14625, request an area variance from section 250-5.1-F1 of the code to allow a swimming pool with less setback at 1549 Creek Street. The property is owned by Sarah Paulus and zoned R-1-20, SPL number 108.11-1-70, application number 18Z-0018.
Hi.
Hi. I didn't know I was gonna get to speak. This is very exciting. Um, I'm Sarah, my husband Steve. Um, we'd like to put in a swimming pool for our kids, um, and ourselves, of course. Um, we went and basically, you know, put a deposit down on a pool back in October, um, went to have it installed, and lo and behold, the creek bed on our property was a little bit of an issue. Um, so we've been back and forth with Mr. Costello, and... My husband can give you the names of the guys that we've been working with. Um, back and forth since October, um, just trying to figure out what to do with this pool and, and how to get it on a property. We have a very narrow property, um, on the north side is, uh, the creek, um, and to the south side is, obviously, our other neighbor. Um, so we've had them out to assess the flood zones, um, mark that, we've had it resurveyed, all this fun stuff. Um, we basically worked with the guys, hopefully to come to a conclusion that might work for everybody. We took the pool, um, down a size, from 24 foot to a 22 foot, um, and then we also considered an oval pool at their suggestion. Apparently oval pools are now mechanically built differently, they're about twice as much as putting in a round pool, so financially, that wasn't really an option for us, um, and basically what we need, instead of the 10 feet from our, um, south neighbor's lot line, is five feet.
Four feet is what we have.
Oh, four feet, sorry, excuse me, four feet. Um, we have a letter of, uh, support from our neighbor to the south, uh, there, no, to the west, the Babbitts behind us, they're a local real estate agents, they're always, know what's going on in the neighborhood, um, so Sharon sent a letter of support. Um, and then we have had the opportunity to speak with Gabe and Josephine next door to us, um, they didn't do anything written for us, but we did speak with Gabe, and he said, "You got young kids, go for it." Um, and then one other thing I just wanted to note, that, um, our garage actually does pretty much sit on the lot line anyways, so the swimming pool would actually be to the inside of our garage. I don't know, did I do enough song and dance? I don't know. Any questions?
So thanks for coming, that was really helpful, you answered a lot of my questions in the presentation.
I have some pictures for you, too, that you mentioned.
Do you want to put those up on the board, so that people can see them?
Oh, gosh, yes, I can try. Um, I made a couple copies, I didn't know how many there were of you. Um, I did put 24 on here, it's 22, I forgot that we sized it down a little bit. This is what the pool actually looked like. Um, this is off of the brochure, so obviously they superimposed it in front of somebody else's house, that's not my house. Um, and then this is our yard, very kind of difficult to see the way our yard moves with all the snow that we've had, but, um, we took it from the...
Back of the house?
Go ahead.
Um, so, one of my questions was, uh, what your neighbor next door said, and you're saying that they are, um, they have no issue with it?
Correct, yeah, we had the opportunity to catch them out, they had been gone for a couple days, so...
And then I wondered, actually, how much more an oval pool was, it really is twice as much more?
It's not, it's, let me see, we went and got a quoot, I think it was in that thing, let me see here. The pool itself was $6,500, just for the pool, um, and I think...
And with an install of...
And then, an additional on the install was 1,800.
Eighteen hundred more than a round pool?
On top of, oh, no. The pool itself was 660, uh, 6,663.
With an install of 1,800 on top of that.
And then our other pool would have been 3,599.
It was 5,600 total, I think, something like that.
Yeah, with the install, I think.
Okay. So, that, that ballparked it, that was good. Um, so I'm just wondering if, is there going to be any issue, and I know maybe this is a question for Andy about engineering, if you put a pool there, is there anything that's gonna happen to destabilize that bank?
Uh, actually, my understanding is, they met with Mike O'Connor in engineering.
Okay.
And he determined, determined that it was necessary to keep the pool 12 feet back from the edge of the bank.
Okay, and then that would be okay?
Yeah, which is what moves it closer to our neighbor.
And you'll have all the safety features of the pool?
Oh, yeah.
That's correct.
Thank you, that was all I had.
Anything else from the board?
So just to clarify, the town engineer said...
Right, is the engineer?
Yes.
Said, "Move it closer to the lot line away from the creek," requiring the variance.
Away from the creek, 12 feet away from the creek, which pushes it a little bit closer...
Which makes you require a variance.
To our, yes, which is the reason for the variance.
All right, thanks, that's all I have.
And then, uh, we, like I said, took it down two feet on the pool size, which I think the math works out.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Should I take these down?
You want the pictures still up, or...
Nope, they're yours.
Application number two, Troy Bassett, FreeChurch.net, 260 Embry Road, Rochester, New York, 14625, request a special permit under sections 250-10.3-A of the code to allow temporary signs within the right-of-way of Creek Street and Embry Road. The properties are owned by the County of Monroe and the Town of Pennfield, and are zoned R-1-20.
Thank you.
SPL number 108.11-1-1.1, application number 18Z-0015.
Hi. Hi. Do you need a minute to, you want, you want a minute to look at those over, do you want me to just? Okay. So my name's Troy Bassett, uh, we're looking at the, uh, intersection of Embry and Creek Street, and, um, we've been meeting in the Rochester Christian School for about six years now. Typically, when we tell people, when they ask us where our church is, we'll say it's at Rochester Christian School, and the next question they ask us is, "Where's that?" Uh, 'cause it's very hard to see, you cannot see it from the road, it's completely hidden. Um, in fact, the entrance to Embry from Creek Street is completely hidden. So there's this, um, there's a Y for Embry Road, where it comes into Creek, and it's on the intersection of a very strange S curve. So, um, basically, for the first few years that we were there, people continued to tell us, "We couldn't find your building." So we'd drive by it, we'd end up having to turn around to neighbors, turn around to come back, either from the north or the south, because it's on this, it's on this hidden turn. Uh, so what we did three years ago is, we added different signage to allow people to see it coming from any direction. So essentially, if you look at those maps, uh, if you're coming from this, if you're coming from the north, uh, down Creek Street, now you'll see the sign that's in this grassy triangle, uh, which is a right-of-way, and, uh, people can see that, and then they turn immediately to the right. Uh, coming from the south, they'll see this number two sign, uh, which lets them know that the, that this, you know, entrance is coming. So when, once they get around all this, these trees and bushes, um, they'll see the sign again in the grassy triangle, and they turn left going in there. Um, so what we realized, we didn't realize, is that these were in the right-of-way, and that we needed permits, so I've been talking with Jim Costello, he helped me walk through the steps of getting this done, so we have it. It's been approved by the Monroe County, um, that it's okay for us to put them there, we just wanted to bring it before you, to see if we can have these signs. They're not, um, they're a lot larger than normal, uh, but they are only up for four hours on a Sunday, so they're up four hours a week, uh, from about eight o'clock in the morning until 12 o'clock while we're holding services, and then we take them down. Um, so we're just, uh, so that's basically the proposal.
Go ahead.
What's, what's the function of sign three?
Right.
Is that, is that necessary? I mean, you already have, you said, you, people heading south on Creek, see it on...
Yeah, well, I think the, the reason for sign three is that it's, then it's right next to Rochester Christian School's sign, so they equate, that's where we meet. We tell people we meet at Rochester Christian School, and so having the sign there, just, again, it just lets people see it. If you've ever driven up and down that road, it, that entrance is extremely hard to find.
By the way, is the only way to get to the church, while in the school, um, from Embry?
Yes, 'cause that, that little, Embry actually takes a hard left, you'll see that little, that turn it takes at 90 degree turn, that's a one-way street, so you can't go the opposite way on that road.
So given that, I, I guess I would ask the same question that Mike has, but my question's about number two.
Number two, yeah, that's almost like a, I mean, when you finally get to the end of the road, we just say, "Turn right."
You know, a, hey, heads-up sign, you know?
Yeah.
I, I get that, but...
For, once we put up the signs...
There's a lot of signs in a little area.
For a very short amount of time.
I get that.
But what we, what we've heard, what we've heard from our, from people who come to our churches, your church was so easy to find, um, which we never heard that in the first, first three years of being there.
You mean with the signs?
With the signs. With the signs.
Yeah.
How many new people are you getting each week?
We probably get like five to seven, you know, guests each month.
Each month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And how, how, other than regular services where I'm sure all are welcome, how often do you have special events, shall we say? Weddings, funerals, that sort of thing? Do you ever have that?
Rarely.
Okay.
Rarely. It's pretty much Sunday mornings.
Okay.
But we've never set the signs up on any other day besides Sunday from 8 to noon.
Yeah.
And all those people find it for a wedding or a funeral when you have it?
We don't, we usually they're held at a funeral home.
Oh.
A lot of times they're at a real church, because people want their funeral in a church, not in a school. Wedding's typically the same thing. They're usually at a church, not in our school.
Okay.
We set up in a gymnasium, right? So we have our worship service in a gymnasium that we transform into a worship space. So it's not really something people are looking for, for their funerals or their weddings.
Thank you.
And is it fair to say that for the most part that guests or first-time visitors, given the fact you don't really have special events, you're hoping that they become members?
Yes.
Okay.
So am I correct in assuming that signs one and four have arrows? Two and three are just the regular welcome signs?
Let's see, signs one, two, and three, one, two, and four, all are directional, right? And number three is just an entrance sign, right?
So two is also directional?
Yes.
Straight ahead.
No, that's actually, that's, that Embry that you're looking at there, that's actually that one-way street to the left.
Right, so you wouldn't be directing people there, because they can't go that way.
Well, there's actually a subdivision right here. There's a subdivision road right here that you could go right.
Oh, okay. Where it's, it's a sidewalk.
It gets more confusing the more you look at it. It's very confusing. That's why we need, that's why we need the signage.
So that two location has an arrow going...
To the right.
Which is the one-way street, but there's another street alongside it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been there long enough to figure, try to figure it out a little bit, and it's, it seems to be working right now.
So 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Sunday mornings, for, for how many months, shall we say? I'm not going to say weeks, I'll say months. Or until, you know, forever?
As long as we, as long as we meet there, I guess.
Okay. All right.
I mean, we have worship services every Sunday morning.
It just, it just seems to me honestly that while these signs would serve the purpose of directing people to the building, you're also, and I think you've already said this, and we appreciate that, you're also would like to use these signs to help grow your membership.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
And that's, that's fine, but it's, it's kind of a different consideration than placing signs so that people know where to go.
Yeah. I, I think as a portable church, because we don't have our own facility, we don't have a building, like, most churches don't realize, or most even buildings, that you have the luxury of having a sign up 24/7. It's a lit at night, people see it.
Right.
It serves as marketing and advertising as well as directional, you know? So we, unfortunately, we don't have that luxury. We, we get that, that marketing value, what, four hours a week? So we're trying to maximize that, I guess, at the same time.
Via this method.
Yeah, well, both, right? I mean, to, to let people know where it is, but also to, you know, that people can see there's a church in existence here, you know?
So tell, tell us a little bit about your, you were establishing, or meeting there anyway, since 2012, I think I'm reading here?
Yes, yep.
Tell us about your membership since that time, since you've been there.
Yeah, so since we've been there, we've, we're right now averaging about 100 people. We, we do, we're very active in the community. So this past, like, this past fall, we had a fall festival at Roethlisberger Park, had well over 1,000 people in attendance. It was just for people to come and have fun. And we also kind of rolled into that a clothing drive and a food drive, which was very successful as well. So, you know, our, our goal is to help make the community a better place, and we feel like we've been able to do that during the time we've been at Rochester Christian School.
Has your membership grown in that time period?
Yeah. We, when we moved into Rochester Christian School, we were probably at about 60 people. Now we're at about 100.
Okay. Well, good. Good for you. Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
I guess I have to have a comment in terms of the, the number of signs. I know it's for a short period, but just, for most applications, we would say that's a lot of signs for an application, no matter what it is, whether it's a business or anything. And usually the first thing to say is, "Well, if you could pick your top favorite signs, which ones would you choose? And could, could you live without one of them?"
Yeah, I mean, I think that, so if I was going to just walk through the signs with you, the one that's on, the one that you first come from the south and you see that's kind of far away from the other signs, if you eliminate that one, the entrance sneaks up on you. I don't know if you're familiar with this road, but you know, I talked with Bill Costello...
I drive down it every day.
I talked with Jim Costello a lot about it. It's, if you drive with the signs and you drive without the signs, it's night and day. So, because there's so much, there's so much bushes and trees in the way that people pass, they'll pass it. Coming from the north the same way, you, you don't see it until it's too late. So, you know, I think that our goal is that people don't, aren't frustrated by the time they get to church. You know? I mean, we want them to...
For this reason.
Yeah, for this, right. You know, so, so by putting the signs up, it's, 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 it's just very clear. You know? It's like when you go to Disney, you're not, most of the time you're not walking around Disney saying, "Where do I go? Why?" Because there's a million signs everywhere. And I think it's, you know, we're trying to make this a pleasant experience for anybody who sees our church online or in an advertisement or hears about it, that when they actually go to go to the church, they can get to it. Most churches, it's right on the road, and you see it immediately, and you just pull in the parking lot. We don't have that luxury right now.
It's, it's hard to tell from this, but it looks like it's kind of close. Sign number four on, let's call it the triangle.
Yes.
Can that be placed so that it's within the edges of Embry Road? So that if you had, you know, you have an arrow...
Right.
So as you're coming, you're heading north and you're coming around the curve, you're going to see that sign, and you're going to see an arrow going left.
Yes.
And same thing if you're coming from the north, heading south, it's pretty, that's a straightaway. So if you see that, you're going to have an arrow on both sides of the sign.
True.
So I, I think having four, to me, sort of eliminates the need for three, although I know you want three because it's next to the school sign.
Yeah.
Plus, the school sign's going to help you a little bit, too. Hasn't been as much, but it will help you, too.
Sure.
One, obviously, to me, is off the road and, you know, you don't want people taking a left, and now they're going down a one-way street and backing up a one-way street and all that. So I just, I, I don't, I'm not convinced two, three, and four are all necessary. Four, four, I think, serves a, a, a purpose, but in any event, that's me.
I would think four could go where three is, just because I can see sign three in the picture of four.
Yeah.
I mean, it's that close, so it's, if you see one, you're going to see them both at the same time.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anyone else in the audience?
Of course you can. Come on up. Come on up, and even though we already have your name, we need it again.
I'm Sarah Paulus. I live at 1549 Creek Street, which is, I don't know, spitting distance from the church. And I hate that little section of road there. My opinion, after living there for 17 years, for four hours a week, as many signs as you can get to get people going in the right direction around that S curve, the better off you are. I have children. I walk in that section. I make sure my three-year-old is in my arms when I walk in that little section there, because the traffic scares me. So if you can get people going in the right direction, the right time, without having to think about it, I think that, the better off you are. That's it.
Okay. You didn't rehearse this.
So I'm in favor.
You didn't rehearse this.
What was that?
You didn't rehearse it when we were talking before.
No, but what do you think about a pool at 15...
Way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Next application.
Michael O'Connell, ID Sign Systems Incorporated, 410 Atlantic Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14609. Request a special permit under section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow greater temporary signage at 2,000 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by Laurel and Inc. and zoned limited business. SBL number 093.02-1-12.1. Application number 18Z-0019.
Hello, everybody. Actually, I'm not Michael O'Connell. I'm Paul Dudley from ID Sign Systems. So, but I'm here to represent Rochester Regional Health on this application. So I trust you've got drawings as well in front of you, but our client is requesting some marketing support and the launch of this new healthcare facility. And we've been working with them on a design for, it's called window cling, but it's basically a vinyl application on the windows where they're going to be soliciting for new patients and expanding on their, their services in this building. And they're also supporting it with floor, four temporary flag signs that will be positioned adjacent to the street. Again, supporting the, the practice and just raising general awareness of the facilities in this location.
Okay. First question, how temporary is temporary?
Well, I think from our perspective, we can make this, these signs quite temporary. The, the flag signs are a removable feature, so obviously you can take them down. They, they don't have any sophisticated installation requirements, so that's something that could be put up for a while. And the, depending on the vinyl we use and when we print it, we can actually put a film on these windows, which A, you can see through, but B, it's something that can be peeled off after a period of time, when they feel that they've settled in and general awareness of their services is better understood in the area.
Do you have an estimate, or does your client have an estimate of how, length of time?
I actually asked them, I asked them that question myself, because I figured you would ask me that question. And their feeling is, they would like them up as long as you are prepared to keep, allow them to have them up, was the answer I got.
Well, I think we're going to have a problem with that.
Yeah, so, I mean, realistically, I would have thought six months would be a reasonable time to give them a chance to actually get some general awareness of, of the, of the services they're offering, offering. So, shall we say, six months and take it from there.
All right. The window sign, is that going to be, it's on the outside of the window?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Is there a way of putting it on the inside of the window?
It, it doesn't actually work if you have it. If you, if you imagine the buses you see on the street when they have that wrap, it's put on the outside because the darkening effect of glass actually takes everything out of the vinyl if you put it on the inside. And it doesn't work that way.
Well, the reason I'm laughing is we have a lot of, of businesses that don't submit to that theory, because they got a lot of window signs...
Right.
...on the inside of the windows, and they're not counted for, for purposes.
It's not, it's not as effective. From, just from a visibility perspective, I mean, it does, you, you can see them, but in terms of the quality of the image, it's actually, affects it quite considerably.
Okay. I guess another point that I saw is you have, basically have the same information on the window sign as you have on the flag sign.
Correct.
Spread out a little bit more on the flags.
Yeah.
So why do you need, does your client feel they need both?
I think they're trying to support the, the message. I think the repeat of the message actually supports it. And, you know, traffic, people driving along the street see, will more likely see the flag signs. I think pedestrians and people moving slowly in, maybe in buses and things will have a more, there'll be more influence by the window cling.
I, with all due respect, I, I can't see visibility being a problem there. Even on a busy road like Empire Boulevard, you have a rather large building. It is rather close to the road with no obstruction. So, yeah, you're calling more attention to it. I guess if you use the theory that you just gave me, you could be requesting a third row of signs between the building and the first row of signs. I mean, obviously, the more signs you have, the better. My question is, why do they feel that that's necessary?
I feel they, I think they feel it's a sensitive design. They're, they're not wishing to oversign. They're just trying, they're obviously trying to market their, and make the, the public aware of their, their location and the services. But they felt that the three-dimensional aspects of the flags and the, and the elements on the windows were sufficient.
Okay. I, I don't think I agree, but I think...
Go ahead, Brendan.
How else is Rochester Regional advertising that they're accepting new patients? Because I often see that...
Yeah.
Even on social media.
But, yeah, it's a, it's a multifaceted approach. Their marketing approach is multifaceted. So they're, they'll have it on the web, and they're probably, I don't know, but I can sure, I assume they're taking ads in local newspapers and, you know, supporting it in multiple ways. The, the signage on the street, it, it's a proven fact, especially with the amount of traffic going on this road, that, you know, this is a very effective way of actually raising public awareness of the facility they've got there, and that's why they're choosing, choosing this route as well.
How many, how much more do they have to reach capacity? Like, in terms of where they say, "We can't accept any more patients"?
I, I don't have that answer. I'm sorry.
If, if your client had to choose between the flag signs in the building or the window mounted sign, do they have a preference?
Again, I don't have that answer, but if, from a design perspective, as a sign designer, I think they'd probably go with the window cling, just because they've got, it's got more square area. And, you know, over a period of time, the viewing of that is, has more resonance than the flags. I think the flags actually are, they're more of a call to action, to look rather than read, and then you'll see the signs on the windows.
Okay. Thank you.
Would that be something you need to verify with your client first? Or would you be, I mean, it's, in a sense, are you saying all or nothing? Or, because, yeah, I do see a lot of redundancy here as well.
I, I think it's a compatible design from their perspective. I mean, we've been working with their marketing team, and they're, they're very comfortable with the proposal. So they see them as it working together in tandem. So I can't answer as they're not here tonight, but I, I'm here saying that we did work fairly closely with them in developing the idea. So they're very comfortable with both elements if you are comfortable with it.
Let me ask you a follow-up question. Would you be, would you recommend, not recommend, but would it be acceptable if we tabled this? In, in other words, till next month to give you, you an opportunity to explore that with them?
I was certainly happy to ask the question. I know they're anxious to get the project moving, so if it has to be tabled, that, that would be, you know...
Doesn't have to be.
You know, it doesn't have to be, but we, we've dealt with, I don't know if you were here with, with the meeting before this, but we, we've dealt with a couple all or nothings.
Sure.
They got nothing.
When it turns out to be nothing, then we, then we have a reapplication...
Sure.
...which creates some more problems.
Well, I think they would much more comfortable to hear your thoughts...
Okay.
...if you wanted a table.
And again, as you may have heard us speaking with other applicants earlier, there are temporary measures that you can take in the interim. Talk with staff about that.
Okay.
What, what type of medical service does your client provide, do you know?
In, in this building, they've got, they're going to have an imaging facility. They're going to have internal medicine, pediatrics, midwifery, orthopedics, and a laboratory as well.
Okay, so some...
The professional services, really.
Oh, sure, but what I'm getting at is there are going to be some recurring visitors, and there are going to be some going there if there's x-rays.
Yeah, I, I think as, as part of their network, they're trying to reach out into the community and actually provide services more closer to their customer base.
Yeah.
So that's why these health service facilities are being developed right now. So that's why these health service facilities are being developed right now, so it's, you know, it's trying to move the population away from the emergency department out into the community.
The point, my point is if you're going to see your internist, you've been there before, you know where the office is, you don't need a sign. My dentist used to be in that building.
Right, so...
As slow as I drove to the dentist, I did find my way there.
Yeah, I mean, this is all about the establishment of a new facility and trying to make the population aware of its availability.
And that's one of the reasons why it's temporary.
Sure, exactly.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. So are you saying that you're, are you gonna discuss whether you're tabling it or are you...
I think it's likely that it will be because, and I think you can take back to your client that the board had a concern that this was a little too much and we'd like some alternatives for reductions.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Application number five, Joel A. Corangelo, DDS Bay Ridge Dental, 1991 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a special permit under section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow additional building signage at 1991 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by Tyrolia Real Estate LLC and Zoned Limited Business, SBL number Application number 18Z-0017.
You guys see that?
Oh, yeah.
I'm Joel Corangelo, owner of Bay Ridge Dental. I'm proposing additional signage on the Empire Boulevard portion of the building. I recently obtained this space here, which is adjacent to my current building, and currently there's no signage whatsoever. And this is actually a rendering of what I'm proposing. Right now, there's currently no awning. The paperwork I submitted earlier shows that. So I'm proposing a sign, Bay Ridge Dental, which is identical to the one...
Can you use the hand mic if you're gonna...
Yeah, I think it's underneath the podium. No? Oh, right here. Christine's got it.
Under the whiteboard, I just heard.
With the markers.
By the markers.
If you lift it up, I think it's under there. You're walking away from the microphone and we can't hear you.
That orange one might not be on. Dave's probably gonna turn it on.
See if it's on the chalk tray up there.
There you go.
Well, there you go.
Better?
Thank you.
So currently, my clients that come from the south, it's not a problem. The building, the way it's facing the south, most everybody can see it. Coming from the north, oftentimes my patient will drive by and then have to loop back around. Additionally, you know, the way the building is broken up, I would like some signage there and just have a nicer aesthetic appeal to the office, have a nice clean lines and let people know that I'm there as well. The new entrance is going to be here. I'm sorry, I gotta grab that pointer. There's just a microphone in there, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah.
So the entrance and exit, my receptionist is gonna be right in the middle here, so both of these doors will be used for ingress and egress. And again, identical sign to what I have on the Terrell Boulevard sign. And this little sign right here is just, it's a tooth. It's three feet by two feet. There's no printing on it, just something to identify that that portion of the building is also at the dental office and I'm there. And that is just a blow up of the tooth. It's, that's not the exact tooth I'm going to use, it's kind of a rendering. It'll be perpendicular to the building.
And will be a molar though?
Yeah. Well, if that's me for debate, we could use it incisor. But again, no printing on it. I'd like to have it lit. If it's not lit, that's okay too. Again, just to tie everything together.
Okay, so the portion of the building that's northernmost or easternmost, I guess, the thing that looks like a little Alamo, what are you, what are you gonna, are you gonna use that space for, to treat patients? The, yes, that space there, is that all?
Yeah, those are operatories going down that line.
All right. I guess what I'm wondering is the sign that's actually facing Empire Boulevard, how useful is that going to be to you? If you're heading, let's say from, on Empire from Webster into Penfield area, aren't you gonna be upon your building before you can even see that sign? In other words, unless you're looking directly at it like we are, are you really gonna be able to see it? It looks nice, don't get me wrong. The other side, we can't see on that depiction? Absolutely, when you're heading east on Empire. Absolutely, that is needed and I think probably serves a purpose. I just don't see how that, that would do you much good, to be honest with you, but I, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Particularly if you got an illuminated tooth. If you're looking for a dentist.
Yeah, but the illumination.
And again, if this was all just one big building that was a uniform color and I could put one sign in the middle, that would, I would love to do that. It's just the way it's broken up.
Yeah, I get it. And we've had this issue on Empire before.
With this building.
Yeah.
We've had a request for those, well, I think it was you.
Yeah, it was me, six years ago, so. Okay, and at the time, I didn't have the additional space.
You didn't have all the space.
Yeah, and I go all the way down to, you know, way down to here, so it's quite a bit of square footage. I just want the visibility, even know that the Walmart's built across the street, people coming out of that parking lot would be able to see this sign of the building, which would help.
And can you let us know, it may be in your document here, but can you let us know where you are in terms of permitted square footage and how these would compare? Again, I'm, maybe it's here.
Yeah, I have ninety...
Total square footage of the combined signage would be 54 square feet. Does that include what's up there now and the tooth?
No, what's up there now is forty-eight. So I'm proposing another forty-eight and then the tooth would be square, six square feet.
So if this were granted in total, the number would be 54 square feet?
Correct.
Well, that's, that's what I'm hearing you say. In your letter, you say my existing sign facing Terrell is 24 square feet in area. But then I thought, I just heard you say 48, so I'm just, I just wanna clarify that.
No, the existing sign is 12 feet by two feet, so that's 24. So the new signs in combined would be 30 square feet.
Okay. Any, go ahead, Andy.
I actually calculated...
I'm sorry, I'm, yeah.
The two signs and the tooth come out to 58.83.
All three combined?
All three, yes.
Okay, and how much based upon the frontage and the rules and how much is permissible if you had one sign?
Well, he has 96 linear feet, which equates to 192 square feet.
Okay, so you can see the purpose of my asking, one of the purposes was to point out that legally, if you had one sign, let's say at the top of the Alamo, you could go up to, and be within code, up to 196 square feet. So you're well under that number. Problem is you have more than one sign and one building sign is allowed and you're asking for three. And I'm just commenting on that's, that's why you're here.
The logo issue too.
Well, the logo issue too is a good point. Apparently a tooth is a logo.
Just like a chili is, chili pepper.
Yeah, but there's a name that goes with it, but I get it, yeah. You're right. Nothing on the awnings, right? You're not proposing...
No printing on the awnings, no.
Okay. Not a drill or anything like that? No vacane needle? Sorry, man, I had to do it.
So the square footage number for the signs, that's, you don't combine that into one total number?
Well, we do, but it's still multiple signs. So in our mind, when we're looking at it, we always try to make sure you're at least staying under the total allowed, so, you know, we typically wouldn't grant something that exceeds what the total amount is you're allowed.
Yeah, you're, you're fine there, you're well below what would be allowed if you had one sign. Okay, boy.
I got a question for Andy. If it's, if you had a building number, like the street address on the tooth, is it still a logo? Or is it just a directional sign? I'm just asking.
Oh, it's a good question.
Well, it isn't necessarily logo, but it's graphics too, graphics, trademarks, logos. Address number is a requirement, but I don't know, I guess that's kind of a...
It's just a coincidence that it's shaped like a tooth.
Yeah, at least it's a placard, yeah.
So the issue there, you understand what the issue is, that we're talking about logo and graphic. The statute also only allows so much of any given sign to be taken up by a logo. You know, a round, or excuse me, a square McDonald's sign can, the M, the arches can only occupy, what is it, 50%? Something like that?
That's the max.
50% of that sign. Your tooth, the entire thing...
If you boxed it out.
Is a logo. And that's why you need that variance as well.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. All right, any further questions from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay?
If I could, I thought I'd just comment too. I mean, I know you guys have to decide. On the virtue of that, you know, down the road a bit at the Dollar General, it's kind of the same...
Yeah.
...corner where the sign is quite large and similar to this situation.
But that's what I asked, why I asked that question about yours, 'cause I, believe me, we're fully aware about Dollar General. Again, I live not far from there, so I see that. And also, just last month, we granted two signs for Cricket...
Yes.
...in the Sunrise Plaza, headed toward Plank. That building's shaped kinda like a, an arrow, if you will, a point heading out to Empire, so lot, you know, and we had granted two signs there for, I think Verizon. Dollar Tree clearly has two signs, but there's that intersection of Bay and Creek and Empire that lends to it. I understand why you're asking, again, I just, that one facing dead-on to Empire, I just don't, I just don't know how valuable it would be for you and I, you know, I almost wish your building was angled, so it would be an easier decision, but okay. Anyone else after I made those comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Application number six, Rachel L. Roberts, Secret Ingredient Cupcakeery LLC, 16 Derrick Drive, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. Request a special permit for a change of use under section 250-5.6-B2 of the code to allow a cupcake business at 1991 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by Tyrolia Real Estate LLC and Zoned Limited Business, SBL number This is application number 18Z-0014.
I've seen so much.
I can't believe it's the same building.
I know.
I know. Does it look familiar? Here's the sign, right there. Okay. I just find one thing, sorry. I apologize now because I'm really nervous. I'm Rachel Roberts, as you've clearly stated, and what I would like to do is turn store number five into a cupcake shop that used to be Computer Works. So it's basically just a big empty space right now. While I was waiting for this meeting, I simultaneously submitted my application with payment to the Monroe County Health Department for my floor plan approval and for a food service establishment permit. I apologize, I only have one copy, so I will give this to you. Monroe County did approve my floor plan, so. And I only have one sign.
Can you tell us a little bit of information about your operation, hours, number of employees?
Sure.
Parking situation there?
Mm-hmm.
That sort of thing.
So currently, right now, I've been in business for about four years, just baking out of my home, and I was working full-time, but the demand for this got to be a lot. So with discussing it with my husband, who I apologize that he's not here tonight, he had a prior commitment, we decided that this is something that I'm really passionate about and that we'd really like to pursue. So we looked at a bunch of spaces and we really liked this one despite the crazy colors So I, what we're thinking that I will start out with is, and don't laugh, I'm gonna try to...
We can't promise anything.
I know, right. I'm not going to have any employees to start with, it will just be myself. I'm hoping to one day have a big enough demand to hire people, hire staff, but for now, we wanna just kinda take it slow and see where it goes. I'm planning to be open from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Saturdays from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM and closed on Sunday. Obviously, my, well, I don't wanna say obviously, but my husband does work full-time. When he's out of work, he'll come up to the shop and, you know, make sure everything's okay and he is my, my supply purchaser. He has always been the one so far that has, any ingredients that I need, he takes care of and I just tell him what I need, so.
Okay.
Did I answer all your questions?
Yes.
Okay.
What changes are gonna be made to the building to accommodate your use?
So, I wish I had a picture. I apologize, I don't have a picture of a floor plan right now. So the biggest change is, I don't know if I have to use this one here. I don't know how to turn this on.
It might be on already.
Oh, the other one's under here, okay. I'm sorry. Is this one?
It's on.
Okay. So the biggest changes are gonna be this wall here will be constructed. There's nothing, this, this room is all open right here apart from the basement entrance. So my contractors will construct this wall and then this, there's an office here that I'm having them take down this part of the wall and this wall here. This dot here is a support structure because it is, this wall is the support wall, so that's why this part remains. I wanted the whole thing open, but obviously I can't take down a support wall, that would be bad. And then this right now is an existing galley kitchen, so they'll get rid of all that. Plumbing will be put over here to accommodate for my three-bay sink and my hand sink and my mop sink. This bathroom already exists, so.
Any further questions from the board?
Is it a shared dumpster at the property or really of your own waste?
There is a shared dumpster. It's actually pictured right here that is under surveillance. Our landlord mentioned that he's had some issues in the past, but there is surveillance on the dumpster. But it is for, for all of the tenants, that it was five and now it's gonna be four, so.
Okay. No more questions from the board?
Was there any outdoor seating planned?
I hadn't really thought to have any. Somebody did mention it to me at one point, but I, it wasn't really a plan right now.
And it's just to carry out? If I'm reading this correctly, there's no seating inside?
Well, I actually, I didn't have any pictured, so I do apologize, there isn't anything here. I wanted to have just four two-person tables, so seating for eight people. Jumping back, you had asked me about parking as well, I apologize. After speaking with our landlord, Tom, there are, it's hard to see with all these trees here, but there are 54 parking spaces on that property, so I think it will accommodate for all of us.
So you're then selling beverages to go along with the cupcakes?
I'll have bottled water, bottled soda, milk, and just regular and decaf coffee.
All right. Anything else? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Well, who doesn't like cupcakes?
I'm not gonna say.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. That was it? All right, that was the last application, so the hearings will be adjourned. We'll take a brief recess and then reconvene in the back of the room. Thank you all very much.
Session, and the first thing we will do before we forget is the minutes from last meeting, everyone's had a chance to look at those. I actually had an addition that I would like in those, and I emailed myself what it was. It was on the, oh geez, what was it now? It was, oh, oh, I know what it was on. It was on Glendavir's. I just wanted to make clear that when I noted the failure to meet the burden of proof, that what I was saying is that they have to demonstrate that the expansion would bring the property more in conformity. And while what they proposed would certainly create more parking, to me, the cost, if you will, of the changes to the environment in the property was, in my opinion, too much for the benefit that would be achieved with more parking. So that's the change. I just wanted to, I guess, maybe expand on that. I thought I had said that, but I, as opposed to just saying they didn't meet their burden of proof, I wanted the minutes to reflect that. So I would make a motion to approve the minutes with that addition.
No second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, then in terms of hearings, who do we have? Nobody? Kidding me?
They're still here, though.
No, no.
So number one, then, probably.
The pool. There we go, pool's still here.
Oh, okay, so I'd like to make a motion for seeker. This is a type-two action, negdeck, requiring no further action.
I don't know if it's a type-two action, I don't think it's a negdeck, so.
Oh.
Yeah, no further.
That's what I was.
No further.
No further review.
Okay, so we have on seeker, a motion to declare it a type-two, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve this request for a variance of six feet. First of all, this is really going to be required by the engineering department in order to make it work and not disturb the bank. Also, a, an overpool which would not require variance is a financial burden, and I don't think this will impact negatively the character of the neighborhood or, and the neighbor, the neighbors are okay with the change.
And also, Ed, there's also a garage that's two point five feet from the sideline line. This is, this is going to sit behind, so visually, it'll look less intrusive to the product.
Right.
Good point, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck with the pool. All the way down to the bottom, then. So, I'm waiting for her to get in there, so we can take the cupcake.
It's okay.
I know, I know, I know.
It's okay.
Well, despite the fact, well, let's see, I'd make a motion to declare this an unlisted action pursuant to seeker, and also that there, we should issue a negative declaration, that there will be no significant impacts to the environment.
I'll second that.
Further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Despite the fact that the applicant did not provide the board with any product and to determine.
Withdraw the comment.
No, 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 no. I truly was kidding. In any event, wow, I am, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve this application. In fact, I didn't, I can't come up with any conditions to put on it.
No, I'll second it.
So it's change of use, but really, it'll be a good use for that, for that area. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck to all of you, you've both been approved.
No.
I'll just.
You're the custodian.
Okay, and, uh, let's see, where are we? Go back to the beginning, then. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah. Whose is the church? Mike's?
Is that Mike? Mike, you have the church?
No, really?
You have, you have your church?
Uh, Murray?
I am.
Yep, the Free Church.
Wow, nice.
What do we, for seeker, what did we?
So for seeker, is this an unlisted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So an unlisted action with an issue, negative declaration, no further action required.
I will second that. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So I'm really struggling with this application, and he did, did he say there were any that he would be willing to?
No, I tried to.
No.
We didn't push them all that hard.
We didn't.
That doesn't mean we.
Right, yeah, ifs.
Yeah, I mean, I actually don't see the reason for sign three, and would be okay with approving two and four, and one, but, but I think if you move four to three, that would work and would create, you know, it would solve the problem of traffic and not knowing where to go, and it's not too excessive at that point.
So, I'm sorry, what did you say?
So I would be willing to support.
How many signs?
Three signs. One, two, but four, and if they want to move it to where three is, that's fine, but I don't see a reason for sign three.
Or how about just three signs and they pick it?
I could do that.
Well, do, do we, do we want three signs out on Creek? I really don't care about one, that's.
Just the what they said all had to do with, you know, location and directing people, but sign three is not directional.
It's not directional.
So, I mean, they didn't really even support.
And I'm okay with one, too. One doesn't bother me at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care about one.
But, but, yeah, why don't we say one, two, and four?
One, two, and four?
Because three is directional.
And I really, and I know it's, this isn't a map map, but boy, I, I tell you, I think four is gonna, is gonna really serve the purpose well, the directional purpose that they desire, because it's, it's, there, there'll be an arrow coming both ways, and people will say, okay, now here is where I have to turn. It doesn't line up perfectly with Embry, but I think it's close enough that it will.
It's pretty darn close.
And it's pretty big. And, you know, okay, and then we had a neighbor that just happened to be here come and say, put, you know, those signs that she's okay with them.
More signs, the better, yeah.
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 So your motion, then, Marie, is?
So my motion is to approve.
One, two, and four?
One, two, and four.
All right.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to approve most of the application, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
RG needs withdrawn. Back cue, Mike, for the, the one that's going to be tabled, number four.
For seeker, I'd make a motion that this is a, an unlisted action, and that there's no.
Negdeck?
Negdeck, no impact, player metal impact.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'm going to move to table this, again, to give them the opportunity to decide if there's an alternative they can live with, or if nothing else, which of those two options they would rather go with.
Yep. I'm really surprised, I'm not a sign expert, but I'm really surprised to hear that those window decals, whoever made that suggestion, trying to help them, that they have to go on the outside.
I know.
Maybe it's the distance from the road, how visible it is.
I guess it could be.
I don't know.
In any event.
I'd even like to make a note to the applicant to say, I mean, I'm not opposed to having the window sign there for the six months or whatever they want to, and then maybe the outside signs for a month. I mean, really make that temporary. I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that so much as an alternative, as opposed to all of them out there forever.
Yeah.
Because that's like a opening, you know, here we are, here we are for the month, and then inside, and then a window, that's kind of a little more still accepting patience. You've seen us here waving our flags for a month.
I guess my feeling is there's no visibility problem there, really. I mean, in that sign, your eye's going to be directed right to that giant banner on the building. The flag thing's kind of overkill to me.
I agree with Mike, I think it's overkill.
Everybody puts two or three signs in front of their buildings, you know.
Well, and honestly, thinking about primary care services, I don't know that they struggle to get patients. You know, what's the word's at?
That's why I asked what the services were. I, I couldn't find that sign on the computer here, but.
I mean, people are.
Some one-stop items, radiology or whatever it was going to be, but a lot of repeat customers, so.
Right.
Okay, well, in any event, we told them we were going to table it anyway. Unless we could prove it a hundred percent, I don't, which I don't think we're prepared to do, I don't, I don't, I don't know that that would be fair to him. So we have a motion to table.
I'll second it.
For him to come back and, with whatever level of flexibility he may have. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, number five. This is the last one?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. I guess I'm struggling a little bit with this, not so much on how I feel, but I just, you know.
Seeker?
Yes.
That's what he's talking about.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Unlisted action, so I'd make a motion that we declare a negative declaration.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So first of all, I don't have a problem with the tooth. I think it's actually a little bit clever and will make people smile, so to speak, as they drive by it. The second sign in the front, I just don't see the purpose that it will serve. And again, for the most part, people visiting that this dentist or all dentists are going to be repeat customers, not all, but for the most part, so.
I'd second that. I mean, basically, that was my feeling when he made the initial application years before.
Yeah.
And the fact that he's got extra building there still doesn't make it any less necessary, in my opinion.
And, you know, Dollar Tree, Dollar Tree's, the streets nearby are at angles, and the building itself is a little, not Verizon, Cricket, clearly that, the shape of that building. So there are other buildings in there where we're even allowed to, but the physical placement of this building, just to me, it, it's distinguishable from those other instances.
And the tooth is going to help identify.
I mean, with Dollar Tree also, I recall it being a visibility issue with the trees and things also.
Through the parking lot.
Right, and there are not those issues for the dentist.
All right, so I guess I, that my motion would be to deny the request for the second sign, but approve the request for the tooth logo.
Right.
Right?
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'd heard it did.
Did you hear it?
Okay. So any further discussion?
Christine doesn't look like it.
Well, you just kind of agreed with the statement, but he hadn't made a.
Two signs, not just the tooth, but what about, there's one side of the building? Is there two?
There's already one.
There's already one there.
There's one existing that's.
He was asking for additional signage on the front face.
Okay.
On the front, if you will.
Good question.
So it's one on a tooth, a tooth, but no sign.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is it it, or do we, is there anything else? We took care of the minutes, right?
Well, we had Glendaviers.
Is it, is, is that, do we need a vote there, Peter?
I don't think you need a vote on Glendaviers, it's just, I, it's basically, just carries forward until you can have a vote that the board can take action on, unless somebody's going to change their vote from the two-two vote, you just have to wait until you have a full board.
Okay. All right, then, any other business? I don't think so. So, good job, moved along tonight, and we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.
All right.